Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me just give it another minute to make sure everybody who wants to get in this meeting can get in.
A lot of people.
Allison, when it looks like everybody's admitted, just let me know.
Uh, it looks like everyone is here.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for joining us. It looks like we have a good crowd this evening. Um, I'm gonna call to order the, the, uh, special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. It is seven oh six P M. I apologize that we're a few minutes late. Uh, and I will start off with the, uh, pledge of allegiance, which I will, um, start for everybody. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Lewis, thank you for volunteering your flag. Uh, uh, item number two, roll call. Manager Elliott, will you please call the role for tonight's special meeting of the Board of Commissioners? You're muted.
Apologize, uh, Commissioner Arm.
Here.
Commissioner Brockington.
Here.
Commissioner Cherico.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Norris.
Here.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Here.
And Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Here.
Everyone's here.
Okay, tha- thank you, Manager Elliott. Um, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege before we get to item three, public comment. Um, in, uh, honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which occurred earlier this week, uh, I, on behalf of the board, would like to acknowledge that the land on which, uh, Cheltenham, Pennsylvania now stands is part of the ancestral and unceded territory of the Leni Lenapi people. Uh, we honor their enduring relationship with this land, past and present, and recognize the ongoing contributions and resilience of indigenous peoples throughout this region. I want to make that acknowledgement. Thank you very much, everybody, for your indulgence there. Um, okay, on to, back to the agenda. Item number three is public comment on agenda items. So, um, as many of you know, where we are here this evening as part of a special meeting to discuss uh, the state of the township's, uh, fiscal, uh, situation and, um, if anyone would like to, uh, provide public comment at this time, uh, you know, this is your opportunity. There, by the way, there will be other meetings this evening, a public safety meeting, a public affairs meeting, and a finance meeting, which will offer additional opportunities for public comment, um, both at Citizens Forum for each of the meetings and as we address various issues. But if anyone has public comment for this special meeting uh, regarding finances, please feel free to raise your hand. Uh, you'll be acknowledged and you'll have three minutes to provide your comment if you like. I'll give people a chance to raise their hand if they so choose.
Excuse me, I, I came in late, but I, um, this portion is just about finances?
This is the, that's correct. This is the special meeting. Will be followed by the public safety meeting.
Oh, okay.
Then followed by public affairs and then pu- followed by, um, uh, finance, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Arm, I think there might be a little, um, uncertainty about whether there will be uh, public comment after this particular meeting, or would further public comment um, need to occur during the public affairs, public safety or and finance committee?
Yeah, so, um, after this, after this presentation, we're gonna close this meeting and then public comment, if anyone wants to talk about finances, um, would probably be appropriate during the finance meeting, but certainly could raise it at any of the other public meetings during Citizens Forum. And obviously, anyone who is, uh, either, um, unable, unwilling, or, um, uh, decides not to, uh, provide public comment during this public meeting, uh, certainly, you're free to, uh, reach out to the township or commissioners uh, via email or telephone call, however you, uh, wish.
Right.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna give it one more opportunity to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Okay.
Uh, I see.
I see one hand. I see one hand. John and Caroline Stritzinger. You're muted. If you unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, uh, hi, this is John Stritzinger. Uh, here I can bring my video up. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I, I got on, uh, this evening because, um, I'm a, a user of our, uh, public libraries. I live in Elkins Park and I use the Elkins Park Library and, um, from information that I'd heard prior to this, hopefully, it's, I don't know what the, the actual status is, was that there may be a drop as for as much as a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for the library and that seems like a significant drop for, um, our libraries, which provide, you know, a safe space for many different people, uh, access to books, education, and just a, a general, um, meeting place that we've all come to rely on. So I just wondered, um, are you planning to do that? Are there any other, uh, options that are available to not have to take so much from the library budget and yet still be fiscally responsible for the township? Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, sir.
More of a, more of a question than a comment, but can treat it as a comment. Thank you.
Uh, uh, understood. Um, any of my colleagues wanna provide a response or?
I think we'd probably hear this, the answer in the presentation, right?
Yeah, uh, um, th- there will be some discussion of this at the presentation, but, but what I will say as a general matter is that, um, as you'll see tonight, um, th- there is, um, there are a lot of hard decisions that this board has to make in terms of, uh, its budgeting, uh, budget for twenty twenty six, uh, which includes, um, which, which will include, as you'll see, uh, uh, impacts for our taxpayers, impacts for our departments and other entities, including the library that, that we provide funding to, uh, and we have asked all of our departments in the township and we're asking, uh, many of the entities that we provide funding to, to look inward and, and help us meet our budgetary goals and reduce the potential for increases, uh, on, uh, in taxes for our residents. Um, and we're, like I said, we're encouraging everyone to do that and the hope is that, um, whether it's the libraries, whether it's our, uh, Public Works or Police Department, all of the above are going to look to, uh, reduce the operating expenses, uh, in the case of the library, perhaps look at their fund balance in order to make sure that, um, we are not overly burdening our taxpayers as we, uh, proceed in this budget process. Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Uh, another point to make, and that is that, uh, after looking at the potential challenges that we have with respect to the facilities funding that we've been talking about for a couple of years, we've withdrawn significant, uh, number of initiatives and basically um, only done some things that we already had sizable funding for, like LaMott Community Center and are being much more austere in the capital expenses that we have. So we're continuing to live within our means and avoiding some of those sizable expenses that at this point, we're not in a position to do beyond taking care of our operating responsibilities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Um, I, I know Jay, oh, Jay, you figured out how to raise your hand. Go, go ahead.
Now I just gotta turn off, uh, turn on my microphone and my camera. I apologize.
We can hear you.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks. So, um, one thing I'd like to recommend is.
Jake, could you tell us who you are?
I, I'm sorry, Jay Greenwald. I, I live on Ashbourne.
These are.
Yeah, six, two, um, and, uh, I live on Ashbourne Road. So I, I just look across at other places where, you know, people have looked at shared services like Marion Township where they've, they took care of, uh, having a regional energy manager consulting, uh, firm, and they shared it among lots of different, um, municipalities. Uh, saved fifty eight K for Lower Marion last year. Um, and, you know, overall, among the other municipalities, those shared services were identified for two point eight million. It was like twenty municipalities that shared it. But I mean, I, I think we need to look at that for police departments, public works, trash collection. You know, we've got other consortions out there, like the Bucks County Consortium, the Lycaster Intermunicipal Committee, that sort of stuff. I think we need to look at how we can possibly, um, creatively, you know, and obviously sharing services is one way, there might be others, but look at creatively, looking at ways to decrease our expenses. I think we also need to take a serious look at things like placing a cap on taxes for senior citizens, no more increases. Um, and just keep taxes flat until we've exhausted other savings opportunities. Like I said, shared regional services is one way of doing that. Uh, so that, that's just, um, that's the point I, I wanted to make.
That, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Great suggestion. Um, and certainly something we can, uh, we, we do belong to a number of consortiums, but, um, but it is something to continue to explore in order to achieve cost savings. Much appreciated, sir. Sen- Senator Haywood, good evening, sir.
Thank you, everyone. As a, uh, resident at four forty-three Rice's Mill Road, former Township Commissioner, I know how challenging these times can be as a commissioner and as a citizen. But certainly want to share with you some of my personal history, which is why I think the supporting the public libraries are so important. Some of you may have heard the story of how, when I was a child, my mother, who was a second grade to a school teacher, took me to the libraries at the every, beginning of every summer, and then we would go pick up books, drop off books, pick up books, drop off books. And we did that from the time I was probably about seven till about thirteen. Now at thirteen, I had my own ideas about what I was gonna do with my summers. But this was a tremendous advantage for me in terms of reading. And there's some significant consequences to my experiences at the library. I am very fortunate that I got a four-year full tuition scholarship to Morehouse College and finished third in my class. Thereafter, I was one of thirty Americans to be selected to get a Marshall Scholarship and graduated from the London School of Economics and thereafter University of Michigan Law School. All because of the emphasis on education and what the libraries did for me going to and from every summer. Some of you may have heard this story, some of you may not have heard it, but I know several have. This is my personal experience with the libraries growing up. Here in Cheltenham, the Glen Side Library has been fantastic. Anytime I had a research question, the research librarians were able to do the research to get the answers. My children visit the library frequently. We had reading competitions in our home. At first, when the children were very young, it was how many pages you could read, and then when they got older, it was how many books you can read. This was books that we obtained from the library. And I'm very glad to share that my children have had tremendous success. Uh, all college graduates, one, a veterinarian, all highly educated, all used the library as I did from my mother's experience. So I share these personal stories so that there can be great appreciation of what the libraries have done for me, my family, and what I'm sure they do for other families as well. So as you consider the difficult choices, which I know they are, I've been, as I say, I was a Township Commissioner and President of the Board of Commissioners at one time. I ask you to take my personal experience into account and understand that it can have a, these libraries can have a tremendous difference on the lives of our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Haywood, and thank you for sharing that personal history. Uh, much appreciated.
And can I just make a quick comment there?
Please.
Um, Senator Haywood, uh, yeah, thank you, thank you for that, uh, uh, background and thank you for all the work that you do, not only on behalf of the township, but on behalf of the state of Pennsylvania. Um, it is worth noting, though, that one of the reasons that the library and the township are in the financial difficulty they're in is that the state of Pennsylvania does not fund the libraries to the extent that, in my opinion, and I'm sure in yours, uh, is needed. I, I think it's actually, uh, in the bottom half of library funding, but I know for, one fact I do know is that the current twenty-six budget, uh, includes no increase from the state of Pennsylvania for the libraries and, uh, and we all know that costs are going up, so just wanted to add that.
Yeah, if I could reply, because the budget impasse is devastating across the state for schools, for counties, and for more. And in so many instances, it is local governments that end up picking up what the national government hasn't done or the state government hasn't done.
Right.
I see exactly that with the education. The state is not providing anything like the support for public education, which is why townships like Cheltenham have stepped up, stepped up at a significant expense to taxpayers in order to make sure our schools are the quality that are needed. So this is a tremendous challenge when this national and the state government don't provide the support, then it comes down to local governments. And I know that the school board has been consistent in maintaining, we're gonna fund these schools even though we're not getting the support that we deserve and require. But that's important context. Thanks for sharing that, Dan.
Thank you both. Uh, moving on to Cass, I see your hand raised.
Hi, I'm Cass McGarren. I live in the Village.
Good evening.
Hi. Before we start talking about any of this, um, I really just want to point out, because I, I have a horrible feeling about where these cuts are gonna happen, um, for the, I was really involved, um, in the whole sewer laterals issue. Um, the Village was the first ones who were going to have to replace their laterals. We were the first ones who had to replace our sidewalks. We were the ones who were going to have our community center and our library closed and our children and adults, but men, I mean, adults drive, children do not, uh, would have to go to the, um, E P library, and it just feels like, and there's, there's many other things that have come up too, but it really feels like we're, I call us a stepchild of, of Cheltenham. That's, that's just how I feel about how, how basically our township, um, treats us. So, I'm really hoping that these cuts are not yet again going to cut the Village first because it happens over and over and over again. And, I mean, I, I sent out to every single, like, Facebook group that I possibly could today to get as many people here as, as I could, because I just, it's just a fact. It just happens. And the other thing I would like to say is, um, I, well, I have a question, but the other thing I would like to say is that pretty much every good thing that we have in this township is done by donations from the people who live in the township. Um, Wall Park, the playground, the, um, and the other thing, I was involved in that and, and the, the skate park, I was leading the students in that. And then we've got the, you know, High School Park Meadow and, and just, and we're gradually seeing our green spaces taken away, which, when you were talking about, um, about us being a part of, about the honor of us being a part of, like, or being on, uh, indigenous land and we're just taking every piece of green land and building on it, I just, it, it's all just so disappointing. But I would also ask, we're, we're being asked to report on, uh, or to ask questions about this budget, which we know nothing about. Um, where is the budget? Like, where can we see it?
Yeah, so the bu- the budget has not been finalized in a draft yet, but we've had two public meetings, um, budget workshops, which some on here ha- have attended, um, not, not, um, not all of you, but some. And, um, that process is open to the public and we have another, uh, third budget workshop meeting on the twenty-ninth of October, and we have this presentation that's gonna be made, uh, today to, um, to present to, to folk. So it has been an open process, um, and widely publicized. Uh, so for those of you who did attend, uh, probably have a little more information than, than those who haven't. Um, so that's, and that's where the budget, uh, the budget has been discussed.
So you're saying there's nothing that we can actually look at? There's no numbers written down on a piece of paper that we can actually see?
Because you've got your presentation coming up.
Yeah, there's a presentation coming up a- and the process is that we have the budget workshops where there are uh, PowerPoint presentations, um, uh, uh, provided during those workshops and then ultimately the budget is, uh, drafted and put out for public comment for, um, uh, Manager Elliot, correct me if I'm wrong, from the period of November, mid-November through, through mid-December. Uh, and then ultimately there's a vote in, in, at the end of December for, uh, for passage or non-passage of the budget as, as it may be.
Okay, so we'll take notes. Thanks.
Please. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? No. I'm gonna turn it over shortly to Manager Elliot and Ms. Salerno for the presentation. Okay. I'm gonna close, uh, item number three, public comment on agenda items, and then, uh, as I said, I'll turn it over to Manager Elliot and our Director of Fiscal Affairs, Janice Salerno, uh, for the presentation. Thank you both.
All right. Good evening. Let me get to my PowerPoint, uh, setup real quick. Okay. All right. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, it's good to see such a good turnout this evening. Um, for everyone's information, um, this presentation will be recorded and, uh, placed on our website and YouTube channel, so in case you want to review, um, what we talked about this evening or, um, want to pass it on to your friends and neighbors, feel free to share, um, and this presentation will also be posted on our website as well. Um, thank you, members of the Board of Commissioners, uh, and for allowing us this opportunity this evening, um, to discuss the state of the township. Uh, to the members of the community listening in this evening and to those who may be listening to recording, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to hear the presentation on probably one of the less exciting parts of municipal government. Um, I know there's probably some accountants and numbers people out there, but, um, probably most of us would agree, uh, I see Dan's laughing, um, that things like trails and libraries and community centers and emergency services are much more fun to talk about. Um, but just because budgeting and finance and accounting discussions make many of our eyes glaze over, um, it doesn't mean it's any less important, and we'll do our best tonight to try to, uh, make sense of it so that, uh, we can all understand where this township is going forward. Delay here. There we go. Um, I'm here tonight, uh, with our Director of Fiscal Affairs, Janice Salerno, uh, for the purpose of bringing the community into the conversation early, uh, to allow for the conversation about the bu- township's financial outlook before the preliminary budget released, uh, is released at the end of November after, um, it's adopted by the Board of Commissioners at their November meeting, um, before the final budget is adopted in December and before you receive your tax bill early next year, so you can understand the impact of past, current, and future township financial decisions on your wallet. Um, township staff and board members are acutely aware of the cost of living and doing business in Chel- in Cheltenham, and we're passionate about the work we do and take pride in serving our community uh, and doing more with less and providing better, excellent public service, striving not to increase our already high taxes and for our hardworking residents and business owners each year. Um, but we do have significant capital needs that we've been talking about over the past few years, um, ranging from our facilities to bridges to, to other improvements, um, and even the library that we ta- talked about this evening. Um, but we want to bring you in at this very important time to help, uh, understand where we are and kind of go through some of the scenarios, um, so that you can understand them and help make better decisions as we go forward. So we'll start with kind of where we are, or how we got here. Let's see. Oh, there we go. So in twenty twenty, um, the township completed a five-year financial management pl- um, plan completed by P F M, and we often refer to this as our P F M report, um, which determine the Township Operating Fund has had significant structural deficits that over the next five years would get worse and even become catastrophic from continual budget deficits and a depleted reserve fund if significant changes were not made to correct the course. This slide from a graphic in the twenty twenty P F M report shows that Cheltenham Township would be running operating fund deficit starting at three million in twenty twenty-one up to seven point three million this year in twenty twenty-five. To balance our budget each year, money is taken from the Township's Reserve Fund, which is like your savings account to make sure we can keep the lights on, so to speak. Um, this is like a household checking account that only balances when we dip into our savings. Um, continually utilizing money from the reserve fund to balance the budget and not replenishing it would have depleted the township's modest reserve fund starting in twenty twenty-two, as you see here, with a projected nineteen point four million dollar negative fund balance this year unless the township found additional resources, sources of revenue or cut expenses to build it back up. This trend of budget deficits and depleted reserves is what is called a structural deficit. So, um, the question is, what is a structural deficit? Um, this means that an organization's expenditures exceed its revenues, even in good economic conditions. It's often caused by high spending commitments and declining revenue sources. Um, in Cheltenham's ca- case, the structural deficit comes from a large spending commitments and limited revenue sources that do not keep pace with inflation. Each year, a municipality is faced with a deficit can balance its budget by raising revenue through sources like property tax, cutting expenses, or dipping into its reserve fund. Much like our personal savings account, this fund is for unexpected expenses like a year or two with less than expected revenues or higher than expected expenses. It's not really for balancing your budget every year, and much like our savings account, a reserve fund should cover three months of a community's operating expenses and a fund balance of twenty-five percent or more of a community's annual operating budget signifies a healthy financial outlook, which increases a township bond or credit rating um, and its ability to borrow money. When Chelten- Cheltenham saw that it was on the path described by P F M in twenty twenty, it took P F M's recommendations very seriously and implemented many of the recommendations of the P F M report, which has staved off the projected structural deficit and depleted reserve fund, essentially beating, uh, projections. Since our reserve fund balance is currently around twenty-five percent of our operating budget, P F M projections did not occur, which is a great thing. Um, so the question is, why not? Um, aside from implementing the plans, recommendations, some of which are listed on this slide, I won't go read them all to you, um, Cheltenham's reserve fund balance held steady due to the proceeds of the sale of its sewer system in two thousand and nineteen, the ability to reduce services due to the pandemic, and receipt of nearly four million dollars in relief funds from the federal government. But that four million dollars needed to be spent in four years, and the township has been returning to relatively normal operations over the past few years, which has brought this struc- structural deficit back to the forefront. If significant changes aren't made, the township will be back on the same path it was five years ago. And this is why we're coming to you, um, tonight to talk about this, especially in light of all the things that the township wants to do. Um, uh, we must, so what we, we need to do this evening is talk about some very tough calls that we will have to be discussing over this budget season. Um, we, we've benefited over the last eighteen months with, from Janice's financial experience and our new Open Gov Accounting and Budgeting software, which has enabled us to build off P F M's models and generate financial forecasts over the next five to ten years. This is very important because looking at our fiscal health for one year shows a very different picture from looking at it over the next five to ten years. It's very easy to look at one year and say, things don't look so bad and make decisions based off that, but without really seeing how, how that impacts our financial health in the future. Um, without the benefit of these long-range forecasts, we can, we can't make smaller, earlier course corrections that will allow us to. Um, will help us save from a, um, making much larger problems in the future. Now more than ever forecasting is fu- is vital in helping us understand our financial future and making important decisions. So we do have a lot of stresses in the township. Um, we have a lot of big dreams and big needs. And as we talked about, um, we've been kind of walking back from some of those. Um, we know we need to make major investments in our facilities over the next ten years. Uh, even, even if they are a bit smaller, we know we have major investments in our infrastructure that are necessary. We know our residents want excellent community centers, pools, trails and traffic calming. We know the costs of materials and services are increasing exponentially. We also know the cost of living for our residents is also increasing. But the stresses to the township budget is not just in its capital program, even with the significant investment in facilities. And um, even though, and then it is a small part of the township's cost increases, it's really mostly in our operating account. Um, and some of these stresses are, are seen here on this slide. One thing to note about these financial stresses is that they fall into pretty much two buckets. Um, things that we cannot really control and things that are long-term commitments that we may be able to course correct, but over. A longer period of time, we can't really fix them overnight, unfortunately. As we plan for the twenty twenty-six and future budgets, we've been having tough conversations, both at the staff level and at the board level. About not only our operating expenses, but about our capital dreams. Um, can we present you guys a bare bones budget, um, and adjust expectations of the township? Um, to fix these deficits fairly quickly and keep them at bay? Yeah, we can definitely try to do that. Um, but while our number one priority is that which meets our core mission and enhances the safety of our community. We are guided by the projects and services that create community and quality of life, like culture and recreation. We know the community has a strong desire for these projects and services, and we want to be able to provide quality facilities and activities. That continue to make Cheltenham a great place to live, work and play. A cup, because of this, um, Janice has created multiple budget forecasts to provide some options for discussion and how we can achieve fiscal health. By maintaining current operating and capital expectations, by making moderate cuts to our current operating and capital expectations. And making significant cuts to our operating and capital expectations. So we have several different scenarios that we'll be working through, um, and I will let Janice walk through them, uh, now. Janice.
Hey, thank you, Allison. Um, so to start out, we want to emphasize, um, what our healthy. Financial goals are, um, in order for us to maintain, establish, maintain. Uh, our financial sustainability. Um, so the first one is to maintain a fund balance that is at least twenty-five percent of our total budgeted expenses. Um, which would be about three months of operating expenses. Um, so for our fund balance to be considered healthy for borrowing, just for financial sustainability in general. Um, we would code the fund balance as green, which would mean we're twenty-five percent or higher of our annual budgeted expenses. If we fall between fifteen to twenty-four percent of our, our total expenses, um, we'd be in the yellow. Uh, meaning we want to watch that, we, we need to get it back up to the green, but it's not terrible. And being in the yellow is probably more the norm than being in the green, um, given our current financial situation and the current market. Um, but anything under fourteen, or anything fourteen percent or lower is in the red, um, which is, i- i- your fund balance is basically the cash that you have. Left, um, to be able to maintain and run all of your, um, operations. Um, the next financial goal is to make sure that we can fund our annual operating expenses. But also our annual ongoing capital expenses. Um, so Cheltenham has. Multiple different facilities that need upgrading, bridges that are failing. Um, things that need to get taken care of that might not necessarily be ongoing capital. They may be more one-time projects that'll last us thirty years, um, but we have a goal to be able to at least. Fund with our budget our ongoing operating and ongoing capital expenses. Um, so ongoing capital expenses are most of our, uh, major equipment, um, and vehicles that need to be maintained in order to run. Um, all of our regular operations, for example, refuse recycling vehicles, highway vehicles, um, police vehicles. There's a number of different vehicles that we need, um, every year to make sure that we can continue to provide the same everyday services that you expect. Number three is we, we need, we want to build a capital reserve to be able to pay for our future capital needs. For unanticipated capital projects that could arise. Um, so we've had issues over the years where. Um, we're constantly having to borrow money, um, and pay additional debt service. Um, in order to fund our capital projects, in order to fund our ongoing capital. So our goal is to be able to fund our ongoing capital and to slowly build up a reserve. Um, so that when things happen like sinkholes or bridges that we're finding out, um, really needs to be repaired at the last minute. We have enough funds in reserves, um, to be able to fund those projects ourselves. Um, and maintaining a healthy fund balance at twenty-five percent of our total expenses helps us have the ability that if we don't have enough for any particular capital projects that. Arise, we do have the ability to go to market and obtain bond funding, um, but we do need to prove that we have a healthy fund balance for that. There's. A lot of check marks that we have to hit in order to get that bond funding. So these are all of our goals that we need to maintain in order to be able to provide. Services and make sure that we're in, um, a very healthy spot financially. Next slide. Um, so to show you briefly where we are, currently our millage is at nine point nine nine five five right now. Um, the county assesses the average household, um, value and the average household value according to the county at this point in time is about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, which means that for the real estate portion of your taxes, um, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, we have nothing to do with your school district portion of your taxes. Um, so specific to the real estate portion of your taxes. The average annual house, um, would pay about one thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars with our current millage. Um, based on our current projections for twenty twenty-five, our fund balance will end at eleven point six million dollars. A goal to be at twenty-five percent of your budgeted expenses is eleven point eight million dollars. So we're right there with our current twenty twenty-five projections. We're right at the twenty-five percent mark. However, with zero tax increases, um, our revenue really kind of stays the same. Our expenses continue to grow. And that eats further into our fund balance, leaving us an ending fund balance of just about seven million dollars, which is right under the yellow. Um, which would be fifteen percent to twenty-four percent and puts us in the red at fourteen percent fund balance. So when you look further into twenty twenty-seven, a zero percent tax increase, um, puts us with a negative fund balance. Um, so we would have issues, um, with cash flow and everything else at, at that point in twenty twenty-seven with zero percent tax increases. Um, part of this reason is because over the years, our expenses have been rising at a higher rate than our revenues have been rising. Um, and as Allison had pointed out, we've had other things that have sort of helped us offset that. Um, for instance, um, the sale of the sewer system, we used to have sewer system revenue streams coming in. All of that had sort of kind of helped us a little bit, um, offset eating into our fund balance. Um, for a brief period of time, we had received pandemic funding that had also helped us not eat into our fund balance. But all of those other revenue streams have sort of gone away, and we've been eating into our fund balance. Um, and now we're at a point where, um, zero percent tax increases. Even three percent tax increases are not going to stop us from eating into that fund balance. Um, and as Allison had described, um, you know, it's like your savings account. So once it's gone, there's nothing left to pull from. Um, so at this point, we have to consider multiple different scenarios such as higher tax increases and lower expenses. Next slide. Um, so some of the varying situations that are causing expenses to be much higher are out of our control. Um, to an extent at this point in time. So, um, for twenty twenty-six's budget, uh, some of the larger items that cause. Expense increases are contractual raises, which equate to about one million dollars. Uh, about a million dollars in expected healthcare increases, um, which are rising at about eight percent, um, each year. Uh, and with the healthcare increases, we are also committed to, uh, former contracts. That provided retiree healthcare coverage. Um, that is about five million dollars of our total health insurance costs, which is about fifty percent of our total health insurance costs. It is something that we have no control over at this point in time, but it is something that we have also been. Over the years and throughout different contract negotiations, um, negotiating out of the contracts. So at some point, we should hopefully see that start to decrease, but it's going to take some time before it makes a, a major difference in our budget. Um, we also have in twenty twenty-six's budget about six hundred thousand dollars in transfers from operating capital. Again, that's to cover those ongoing operating capital costs. And we're seeing a uptick in some tax assessments that are coming through. So we're expecting an additional six hundred thousand dollars in expenses for tax assessments, assessments that will be spread over the next five-year period. In twenty twenty-seven's budget, you'll see the, the same similar things that we see in twenty-six's budget. We have further increases, um, to fund our capital expense, um, at a larger rate than six hundred thousand dollars. Because now we're going to sort of fully fund, um, that ca- operating capital that's ongoing. We'll see an additional million dollars in contracted raises, an additional million dollars hit in benefit increases, assuming the same eight percent. Um, we are hoping that in twenty twenty-seven going forward, our switch to divots. Um, which occurred in twenty twenty-five will lower those eight percent increases. Um, as they do have a rate stabilization fund, which they will use after we've been with them for two years. To sort of offset that eight percent increase. So we are hoping that at some point, um, that switch will help us kind of. Keep our healthcare increases lower. Uh, in the past, we were seeing ten to fifteen percent increases in healthcare, so, um, being able to maintain that increase. At a lower level than double-digit, digit increases is, um, helpful and important to us, but it's still a very large amount that we're gonna see. Um, we will also see an additional two million in added costs for the MMO, which is our required contribution for the pension every year. Um, and those values, uh, they change, um, every time that they do a reevaluation on how many people are on our pension, how long they're living. With the actuary can calculate based on those numbers. Um, and so we are gonna see a two million dollar increase in that. Um, m- minimum required contribution in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, Lamont Community Center will be expected to be open at that point in time, so we will see an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in staffing that will be added to the budget. And, um, we do expect to borrow at this point in time about thirty-five million dollars in twenty twenty-six. To cover, um, help us cover the next five years, three to five years of capital expenses, um, that. We were not able to fund our capital reserve with over the past few years. Um, so we'll see a million dollar increase in debt service in twenty twenty-seven, based on the first phase of that thirty-five million dollar borrowing. So, um, in twenty-seven, we expect to borrow fifteen million of the thirty-five million. In twenty twenty-eight, we'll see transfers to capital, um, to help cover that ongoing capital cost and start to slowly. Um, build up some sort of reserve in our capital. Another million dollars in contracted raises, another million dollars expected in health insurance costs. And we'll see an additional nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in annual debt payments in twenty twenty-eight. As we borrow that second phase of borrowing, which would be another fifteen million dollars. In twenty twenty-nine, we'll still see, um, increases expected to cover our ongoing capital. Another million dollars in contracted raises, one point three million dollars in healthcare cost increases. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to annual debt payments as we borrow that last five million dollars of that thirty-five million dollar borrowing. And in certain scenarios, um, that you'll see later in the presentation, um, there will be increases in staffing for Roland Community Center. Um, for the twenty thirty budget, we will finally be at a point where we're funding our capital. On an ongoing basis, and it will no longer need to increase. It will be a steady amount that we will continue to fund our capital with. All community centers that are open will be staffed, so we won't see further increases in staffing. Um, and debt payments will start to, the debt service payments will start to remain flat at that point as we would have finished, um, pulling down all of our. Debt funds. Um, we would see another million dollars in contracted raises and another one point three million dollars in healthcare increases. Um, so that kind of briefly goes through how the larger pieces of our expenses are increasing year over year. Um, and even with three to five percent, um, tax increases that doesn't cover those larger costs. Um, so we have a few different scenarios that we'll be presenting. Um, scenario one, um, was our initial presentation, um, that we presented at our budget meeting. And it had some moderate, moderate operating, um, cuts to our current budget, some moderate capital. Cuts to our, our, our current budget. Um, but we had conservative revenue projections. Um, so we can get revenue projections from Berghheimer on our EIT and LST, um, we can get some projections on our BPT taxes. Lot of our Act five eleven taxes, um, and we get a low and a high range, um, because obviously it's a range, it's a prediction.
I'm, I'm sorry, Janice, if I could interrupt. Can you just, for everyone's benefit, explain what you mean by five eleven taxes, so we, we all know. What you're talking about there.
Sure, it's mostly our earned income taxes, so, um, EIT is our earned income taxes. For everybody who's working, you'll see those taxes come out of your paycheck, um, every time, and we, we basically. So we get those taxes as an alternative source to just our real estate property taxes. Um, you'll also see the local taxes, local service tax come out, the LST tax comes out of your paycheck as well. Um, so that also helps us offset what we need to charge in our real estate taxes, um, that comes, that comes out of your, your paychecks. Every time you get one. Uh, those are the bulk of our, uh, Act five eleven taxes. We also have BPT taxes, which is the taxes from our businesses, so our business privileged taxes. Um, and we get a certain amount of tax from our businesses, we audit those businesses, we try to make sure that all the businesses are paying what they're supposed to be paying. Um, so those are our main sources of revenue outside of real estate taxes. Um, so we committed to our capital projects in scenario one, um, where we're trying to maintain and upgrade facilities that are needed to be upgraded. Um, and in scenario one, we're up, we're, we're basically front-loading the tax increase that needs to happen to sort of. Balance the budget, um, based off of a few years of us using those alternative revenue streams. To sort of help us offset our ongoing expenses and fund that gap between the revenue we're receiving and the expenses that. We're mean, we're, we're encountering, um, so. This assumes we're, we're correcting the problem based on what we're already operating on with some moderate cuts. Um, but maintaining sort of our status quo. Um, in scenario two, um, we've provided more aggressive. More aggressive revenue projections, so we went with the high end of the revenue assumptions that we've been provided. Um, by those agencies that collect that, um, earned income tax and LST tax for us, and we went with those more. We went with their highest range that they would expect to collect. Um, so we sort of increased what we thought we could get in revenue based on. Going with the high end of the assumptions. Um, we removed some of our capital commitments for our facilities, delayed some. Eliminated some, shrunk some others. Um, so it's, it spreads those higher tax increases we expected in scenario one over a three-year period. So in scenario one, and I'll show you on the next slide, you'll see how those expectations play out over a ten-year period. In scenario two, it's a little bit higher in twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, but not as high as it was in scenario one. And in scenario three, we have much more aggressive cuts. Um, these more aggressive cuts, um, would. Result in more obvious, um, service reductions, um, that you would see. Because it would be more extreme staffing reductions, more aggressive service cuts. More aggressive capital expense reductions. Um, it spreads a higher tax increase over a four-year period. We, we do just want to make sure that we mention that the three scenarios being presented are models for planning purposes. Um, so I think in the past, wh- what's been done is we've looked at one year at a time. Um, and what we're trying to do is be much more strategic and understand what the future looks like so that we can plan now. And have more time to plan, um, as we have opportunities to do so, we'll be aware of what we need to do, what we need to change, when we can change them, what we're limited to. And restricted to, um, but we do want to make sure that we emphasize that the scenarios we're showing you tonight are, um, projections. And they're for planning purposes so that we can see how each decision will affect us, not just in one year. But for, for our future. Um, so we have ten-year projections, um, in these different scenarios. So in scenario one, you can see, uh, as I mentioned before, we used our conservative revenue assumptions. Which was the middle end of the projections that we've been given, um, for those taxes. which was the middle end of the projections that we've been given for those taxes that come out of everybody's paycheck. And the expected annual, the expected increase in taxes for twenty twenty six, again, for real estate taxes only, is twenty five percent. In twenty twenty seven, it would be an additional twenty five percent. And then at that point, we would accept, expect to sort of flatten out and be back at a stable rate where we would see between a four to six percent tax increase over the next few years. This puts us in a situation where we're in the yellow, not the green, but we're in the yellow for our expected fund balance that we would need to maintain. And it, it slowly starts to put that fund balance up at a very slow rate, but would eventually hopefully get back up to the twenty five percent. We are definitely in a close, uh, close to twenty five percent range using these assumptions. There were expense reductions that were considered and put in here, but this sort of maintains the service level that we already have been experiencing in twenty twenty five. There was, in this scenario, a cut to the library for a hundred thousand dollars. The library had never received a cut, even when the two locations stopped operating twelve months out of the year and went down to three months out of the year. A library also has a fund balance that has grown. And our expectation would be similar to what we've had to do, where we've had to basically eat through some of our fund balance year over year to make sure that we don't have to have larger tax increases. There is the ability to have some of the fund balance that has been built up at the library be used to offset some of that reduction. Next slide. Scenario two, we have more moderate increases here. We have higher revenue forecasted, so we're assuming we meet the high end of the collections from those Burghheimer collection estimates. However, the tax increase would be only a fifteen percent increase in twenty twenty six. We would expect a twenty five percent increase in twenty twenty seven and a fourteen percent increase in twenty twenty eight, at which point we would expect a normal increase going forward between three to five percent, with the exception of one year where there's an eight percent increase. This also gets us to the yellow for our fund balance, a little bit lower than scenario one. We would hope that as we work through twenty twenty six, there are multiple other things that we're hoping to accomplish so that twenty twenty seven's twenty five percent increase is not a twenty five percent increase. The reason that you see twenty seven go higher than twenty six is because we're starting to fund our own capital. Again, as I said, what's put us in a bad position is we've been looking at, you know, funding all of our capital through borrowing. And now we're trying to be able to maintain our own ongoing capital as we, we've been borrowing. And if we need the bar, the need to borrow for additional facilities in the future, we do need some room to be able to borrow. So this helps us get to a point where we're not paying any additional debt service and we're trying to fund our own capital without having to pay interest on borrowing for that capital. It does lower our capital contribution by four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty six and small amounts across the future years. It would further reduce the library. Instead of a hundred thousand dollars, it would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut to the library contribution. And it would delay and shrink some of our capital projects that we have on the list of things that we need to accomplish. In scenario three, we have much more aggressive cuts, which result in a ten percent tax increase for twenty twenty six and a twenty percent tax increase for twenty twenty seven, eighteen percent in twenty twenty eight. And then with the exception of twenty thirty, it sort of maintains a five percent tax increase going forward. As I mentioned earlier, one of our biggest problems is that year over year, our expenses were increasing at a higher percentage rate than our revenues. Our expenses have been increasing somewhere between seven to ten percent year over year, whereas our revenue was only increasing about one to two percent every year. So our expenses were increasing at a much higher rate than our revenues were, were increasing. And we had been eating into our fund balance to sort of help offset that difference. But there's only so much left at this point in time. But in this assumption, there's many more reductions in capital. There's many more reductions to staffing, but the volume of reductions would actually result in changes to services that are being provided. There were a lot of reductions to contracted services, training expenses, professional services, et cetera. We also lowered our capital contributions year over year. So our capital contributions to our reserve were lower by four hundred thousand in twenty twenty six, one point six million in twenty twenty seven and one million in twenty twenty eight. The reason for this reduction in contribution to capital is not because we don't need it, it is because we had made cuts to what the capital projects were that we were going to be able to fund, or we delayed many of those capital projects that we did not have to fund as many year over year. The contribution to the library was reduced by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this scenario. So as I said, this scenario is a much lower tax increase for twenty twenty six, but it does significantly reduce services to residents and the community. Next slide. On this slide, it compares the annual increases and the average annual real estate tax bill for each scenario. Again, this is based on the average household assessment. And the county provided the average household at about a hundred and forty two thousand, the average household assessment, not value assessment. So you can see that in scenario one, this is a year over year increase. Over the ten year period, the total increase with those proposed tax increases in scenario one was one thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollars. In scenario two, where we made some additional cuts and, and went with more aggressive revenue assumptions, the ten year increases year over year equated to one thou- one thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars. And in scenario three, the tax increases over a ten year period equated to one thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars. So scenario three was definitely the cheapest of all the options. But if you compare scenario two to scenario three, it's about a forty dollar difference over a ten year period. The amount of services that are being reduced in scenario three are pretty substantial, given the fact that over that ten year period, you know, it was like about a forty dollar difference. When we look at the total tax bill, so the second chart there shows if your household was the average household and it assessed at a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. The numbers presented in the second chart, this is what your real estate tax bill would be. So for each year, you can see in scenario one, two and three, based on those tax percentage increases, this is what your average real estate tax bill would be. And it does show that an average, over ten year period, an average of five hundred and eighty seven dollars or fifty nine dollars per year was what you'd be saving compared to scenario two. So fifty nine dollars per year wasn't a significant difference compared to the change in services that were being presented in those expense scenarios. On average, if we compare scenario one, which was the original sort of status quo, original presented budget, to scenario three, where we had massive cuts, the savings were a hundred and seventeen dollars per year. And when we compare scenario two to scenario one, we're looking at saving about fifty eight dollars year over year. So currently, the township is still going through the budget process. And we are still considering multiple different changes to the budgets. We are limited in many areas for twenty twenty six with what changes we can make. We are very ambitious about the changes that we can further make in twenty twenty seven, as we'll have some more leeway and flexibility there to make some future changes. But scenario two is probably, you know, one of the better options going in. There's, there's less service cuts and the change in what you're paying in taxes from scenario two to scenario three was not as significant over the ten year period compared to the change in services that would come with those expense cuts. But we are still looking at multiple different things for twenty twenty six. We're hoping to land somewhere in between scenario two and scenario three with the twenty twenty six tax increases. And again, we're making plans now to hopefully shrink what we would expect twenty twenty seven's tax increases to be. But these increases will help us maintain, at least in the yellow, our ongoing fund balance to make our borrowing ability still be manageable and maintainable. And to also make sure that we have enough cash, given any unexpected situations that should arise. And with all the different departments and things that we manage and deal with, there's so many unexpected things that arise every day that we need to make sure that we have some additional funding maintained for. It also helps us ensure that the capital projects that need to happen, and we have multiple different bridges and things that are failing right now that are in the process of being worked on as part of our capital projects. You know, traffic lights, street lights, so many things that cost big dollars are all in that capital plan. And this helps us with the borrowing that we're expecting. The capital contributions also help us basically maintain those ongoing needs of the township.
Allison, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Janice. Before we end the presentation, as Janice said, we still have a lot of work to do left on our budget planning process. We're still fairly early in the process, even though we're, we're midway through October. Some of the taxes increased outlined in these scenarios will help with our, our larger capital expenses that require our bond funding. We're trying also for like, we want them, the bond funding to really focus on some of those larger projects and be able to fund the smaller reoccurring vehicle purchases and things that are shorter life through that, that expense. But really, the bulk of what are, what we're trying to fix through this presentation and have this, start having this conversation with is a structural deficit, the operating expenses. We, as I mentioned earlier, we have buckets of stresses, some that we really can't change, but we have things that are longer, longer term that maybe we can change and we're going to be working very hard over the next few years to do that. So that hopefully this is, we'd like to say, a really worst case scenario. So we're going to be working very hard over those next few years to, to make those changes. We're going to continue to work during this budget process to make additional changes to the budget. And I, I know I've, I've seen some comments about why you can't see the line by lines yet. There, the budget is still, still a work in progress. We're still working with some of our third parties. And a lot of these numbers are probably the larger ones that we're still waiting for to make sure that we can get those numbers correct and in the budget and still doing our analysis and tweaking of that budget. So like I said, that, that, that number will be avail, those numbers will be available for greater review to the public following our preliminary budget adoption and at the third meeting in November. And we will post our, our budget on our website. We actually have a dedicated webpage to our budget, which is www.cheltenhampa.gov/budget. So hopefully that's an easy way to find it. And you can take a look at some of our past budgets as well, so you can have a general idea of where we have been. I will note that our budget look will be a little different since we have our open gov software. So it will look a little bit different, but the numbers are all still be the same. And you'll be able to get those trends. So these are just some of the things that we are looking for, looking at as we go forward in those budget process. And I'll talk a little bit more about the budget process with our opportunities for involvement. And I, I really thank everyone who's come out this evening to participate and listen in. I know it's a lot that we've hit you with and we feel that this is really important for everyone to hear. We've already had our first two public budget workshop meetings in September thirtieth and October seventh. We will have our third and final budget, public budget workshop meeting on October twenty ninth from four to eight P M. It is broadcast via Zoom and it is in person at our Township Administration Building. We don't take public comment during these meetings because it's an opportunity for staff to make presentations and for our board to ask questions. The, the time for a public comment will be a little bit later. And then Commissioner Armin will be presenting the budget message on Wednesday, November fifth, prior to our Public Works Committee meeting at seven thirty P M. That is a Zoom meeting. And then we have our kind of open into the, the public conversations, which is at our Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, November twelfth at eight thirty P M, which the Finance Committee will review and make recommendation to our Board of Commissioners on the adoption of the preliminary budget on Wednesday, November nineteenth, seven thirty P M. That is via Zoom and in person at Curtis Hall. And then we will be expecting to release the budget document on our website. Again, cheltenhampa.gov/budget. And we'll have a news release for it the week of November twenty fourth. And then finally, we'll have in December, our Finance Committee review, will review the final budget. And adoption of that budget will occur hopefully at the December seventeenth Board of Commissioner meetings, which is via Zoom and at Curtis Hall at seven thirty P M. And there is a public hearing as part of that process in which we hear public comment about that budget before adoption. That's pretty much all I have. Again, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to present this information. We look forward to the ongoing conversation about the township's financial future and how we can really put the township on good financial footing and also still try to provide great service to the community.
Thank you, Allison. I, I just want to thank Manager Elliott, as well as our Director of Fiscal Affairs, Janice Salerno, for, for the, the really hard work that has gone into this, not only this presentation, but the entire budget process. Starting with departmental meetings, I want to also thank our department heads for working to reduce their own departmental budgets and deal with managing the operations while, you know, maintaining safety and our roads and all the things that, that our department heads are responsible for. But this has been a collaborative effort internally. And amongst the Board of Commissioners, I want to thank everybody for the hard work that you all have put in to make sure that we are being as fiscally responsible and also delivering on the promises that, that, that are, that have been made to our residents to ensure that we're providing the type of community that, that we all deserve. And just to tie this up with a, a little bit of a bow, I just want to alert everybody that this special meeting is, is in fact a special meeting. It is not a meeting that we do every year as part of the budget process. But with the hard work of Ms. Salerno and, and Manager Elliott, we recognize as a board that there were some heavy issues that needed to be addressed. And in the spirit of transparency and ensuring that folks are aware of all the weighty decisions that will be made over the course of the next several months, we felt it was really important to have this, have this forum where folks could sort of see some of the things that, that we're dealing with outside the specific budget workshops, which don't always get the best attendance. So I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank everyone for the suggestions that they've, they've made and hopefully continue to make. And I appreciate everyone's, I appreciate everyone's time this evening. I know everyone's time is very valuable and it's really great to see so many people out and engaged in this process. So with that, unless any So with that, unless any other board members have anything to add. All right, I'll call for a German. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.